Of that discussion.
I'd like to see more of that interacting with citizens as well. Debbie Hickman, eight forty-eight South Sumac. I realize you've got to spend money to make money, okay? That's the way it works. But tonight we've heard that the only way we can pay for our streets is to extend. The sales tax is going to sunset at the end of this year. I understand that totally. Police station, million a year. Quote was, that's a lot of money. I haven't heard any big numbers tonight. We've heard individual numbers and I understand you don't have the big numbers. But how do we pay for this? How do we pay for this? And how much can the current citizens bear to go forward? That's what I wonder. You've got to spend money to make it, but we're all paying for this and kind of had gloom and doom so far tonight. So how do we pay for all this? What kind of numbers are we looking at? Thanks.
Thanks, Debbie. Okay. Next up on tonight's agenda is public comments. Members of the public are welcome to use this time to make comments about city matters or items on the agenda that are not part of a public hearing. For those of you that, I do recognize some new people. For those of you that are new, there's also an opportunity to make public comments after the new business items have been, we've got two of them this evening, after they've been presented by staff, if you prefer to wait for that. But that being the case, if there's someone that would like to make comment now, please step to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and be heard.
Hey, Adam. Adam Boydston, one seven four four one, South Agnes Street. Good evening.
Good evening.
I would like to start out, give me just a second here. Add some notes. Today's quick comment, I'll keep it quick, it's been going for a little while. Safety by choice or by chance. Here to talk about sidewalks, okay? I've come up with some stats for you guys. Think you guys have some maps, I didn't bring them this time. According to the U.S. Department of Transportation, National Highway Traffic Safety Administration, the soonest that I could pick up for staff is 2012. And in 2012, four thousand seven hundred and forty-three pedestrians were killed. And an estimated seventy-six thousand were injured in traffic crashes in the United States. On average, a pedestrian was killed every two hours and injured every seven minutes in traffic crashes. To put that in perspective, since we stood up and did the Pledge of Allegiance, someone was killed in the United States of America, okay? I'm very passionate about putting sidewalks on One Hundred Seventy-Fifth Street. I understand that there's a development and that we are waiting to see what happens. I gave my phone number and my email address last time. And I've not been called, not got an email. That's the first time I've been disappointed since I started talking with you guys. Now, Rich reached out to me and I talked with him this afternoon. I understand, this is a big budget, this is a lot of money, okay? But we need to consider that there's an elementary school, and a high school, and a residential area that doesn't have sidewalks. And since the last meeting, there was a police chase right down this road, very high speed. Since we've been in this meeting, you saw one of those cars, police cars, hauling down that road. Moving. How would you like to be standing on that road while that's happening? It's dangerous and something needs to be done about it. I'm simply asking that you continue to consider putting in sidewalks, looking at the infrastructure in that area. Because right now, it'd probably look like a pain in your butt, because I keep coming here every time. But all it's going to take is one incident where somebody gets hurt. And you know what's going to be out here? Box four, KCTV. And I'm going to stand here and I'm going to say, I told them. There are kids right now that are out of school, that are walking through mud, trying to go up the road. I saw two girls just two days ago, just hoofing it. Something needs to be done. I don't have all the answers, but I'm willing to talk to somebody, anybody, about what we need to do, start the ball rolling. I know it's not going to happen next month. I know it's not going to happen this year. But we need to start some discussions and start actually standing up and saying, we're willing to take ownership of it, and we're not going to wait for someone to come in and fix our problems. I bought a house there, it's my problem. This is the city's problem, and we have to start looking into it. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Thanks, Adam.
Thanks, Adam. Hey, if you don't mind, Brian, have you done some work on that sidewalk assessment? I know you've been working on all this other stuff too, so.
Actually, Mark here in our Public Works Office has done the layout along One Hundred Seventy-Fifth Street.
Okay.
Trying to look at what the ultimate section would be, actually shifting the road a little bit to the south. And laying in a, I think it's actually probably a trail on the north side. A trail on the north. So we've got some preliminary alignments for that. I want to think we did put, I think, in the Friday Minute Memo though, with the comment about, we probably ought to look overall at the city, kind of like we do with the pavement management plan, is look at our sidewalks as a whole and come up with a list of priorities. I mean, this is obviously one that's a high priority, but we may have others that are equal or higher priority.
Sure.
That have more users, so that's something that we from a staff level need to start here in the near future.
Okay, thanks, Brian.
Any other comments?
I'm actually up here now to say thank you. I want to thank you all for a great discussion on the governing body rules, procedures. There's a time when a council couldn't have had that type of a discussion. So I want to thank you all for, you may not always agree, but you had a really good discussion. Sitting in the back of the room, I appreciate hearing that. A lot of you asked questions and answered questions, that were things I was thinking about. I'd love to see Gardner be the trendsetter in the way things are done with procedures and best practices. Who cares what the city down the road does? Let's do what works for us, let's be the trendsetter. And I think, Mayor, you're right when you say that we've come a long way and we have set some trends. So let's not worry about what the rest of the world's doing, let's do what's good for us. Public comments. The only time we have all of you right here, a captive audience, is during a work session or is during a meeting like this. Brian, you proved my point tonight that I've been trying to say. Interactive work sessions. I think that type of discussion that you had with Brian tonight could easily be had with the public. He said it, he said himself, he said it would be better for a discussion of that particular item to function that way. I think he proved my point tonight. The public would like to be involved. Give us a break, let us kind of interact with you, feel acknowledged. But again, I want to thank you all, we've come a long, long way. So, Mayor, you're absolutely correct when you say that. I just think that we need to tweak it a little more, be the trendsetter in this part of our government. Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other public comments? With no one coming forward, we're moving to the consent agenda. Is there a council member that would like to remove an item from the consent agenda? If not, we would entertain a motion.
Second.
Motion Harrison, second, should we approve the consent agenda? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Any abstentions? Consent agenda passes. New business item number one. Consider adopting an ordinance rezoning property located at the northeast corner of One Hundred Sixty- seventh Street and Waverly Road from RP one, RP three, CO, and CP two to A. That's Z dash fifteen dash zero one. Brian, welcome back to the podium.
Thank you, Mayor. During the May eighteenth council meeting, the governing body approved by oral motion the rezoning of one hundred fifty-six acres located at the northeast corner of One Hundred Sixty-seventh and Waverly Road. The rezoning request must be approved by the adoption of an ordinance. And once the ordinance is approved and published in the newspaper, this will be tentatively scheduled for June third, the A or agricultural zoning will become effective. Also, at the May eighteenth council meeting, the governing body and applicant came to a consensus to rezone two tracts of the one hundred fifty-six acres from agriculture back to commercial. As the zoning to A will not be effective until published, but tentatively June third, and out of her council consideration, to direct the Planning Commission to consider the rezoning to be brought to the June fifteenth city council meeting, again, following the official publication of the current ordinance. This evening, the suggested motion would be to adopt an ordinance, I don't see an ordinance number. Twenty-four eighty-six. To adopt ordinance twenty-four eighty-six approving the rezoning of one hundred fifty-six acres located at the northwest corner of One Hundred Sixty-seventh Street and Waverly from RP one, planned single-family residential, RP three, planned garden apartment residential, CO, office building, and CP two, planned general business district, to A, agriculture.
With that being the end of presentation, we'll open the floor for public comments. Anyone wishing to make public comment regarding new business item number one? Please step forward, state your name and address for the record.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. My name is Adam Cox, two eighty-five East Skylark Street. In reviewing the minutes of the May eighteenth council meeting, it was apparent that there was a significant amount of confusion regarding the allowable process to move forward with zone modification for the property in question. The applicants brought a modified proposal, which was not publicly available in advance of that meeting and had not been referred to the Planning Commission and had not had any time for public review. The actions by the council to move ahead with zoning the entire parcel and then plan to come back and address the subparcels struck me as violating the intent and purpose of the processes in place to allow public input. Public did not have time to be notified since the modifications took place at the meeting. My concern is that the way this was handled was outside the scope and processes in place to ensure citizens have a chance to weigh in on this critical issue, the character and nature of land use within city limits. In order to allow the necessary and required input, I believe that the modified zoning question should have been, and still can be, referred back to the Planning Commission to allow the processes in place to probably work. The zeal to move forward in Gardner cannot sacrifice the public's interest in being free to comment on actions taking place such as in this case. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Adam. Other comments?
My name's Keith Brock, here on behalf of the applicant. I'll reserve most of my comments for the CUP question that comes later. But just specifically as it relates to this rezoning, I'm sure you all remember from the June eighteenth, or the May eighteenth meeting. But in essence, what was done, the applicant had proposed to remove approximately twenty-five acres from the application. So the notice was given that the entire parcel was to be rezoned agricultural, which is exactly what the council did. The applicant then agreed to, in essence, zone twenty-five acres back. So the request was, in essence, removing twenty-five acres from what was requested. It wasn't materially altering what was being asked for. The remainder of my comments will have to do with the CUP, but I can answer any questions about rezoning, if anyone has any as well.
No, and I actually, I don't know if it's necessarily for you, but I just want, to be clear, because I think there's been maybe rightfully so, some confusion around this. But we, as a council, overrode the actual plan that was presented to Planning Commission. So there was no alteration. You, the applicant, thought that that might be a negotiation tool as good state. The other part of this, the rezoning back, will go through the process. It'll go back to the Planning Commission, it will be noticed, it'll go back to a public hearing. So what we did is exactly what went before the Planning Commission.
You're absolutely correct. All we've done is, the applicant has agreed to cooperate in that process and do whatever is needed by the applicant to accommodate that.
And Brian, you agree?
Yes. What was noticed was rezoning the entirety of the parcel to agriculture. The Planning Commission voted that down. So then that was the recommendation on to you. And you, in essence, overturned the Planning Commission's recommendation by a necessary two-thirds vote. Or if you vote that way tonight, rather on this ordinance, then that's what happened. So it went through the proper public hearing process.
Other comments or questions? I'd entertain a motion on ordinance number twenty-four eighty-six.
Second.
Motion, shoot, second, more. That we adopt ordinance number twenty-four eighty-six approving the rezoning of one hundred fifty-six acres located at the northeast corner of One Hundred Sixty-seventh Street and Waverly Road from RP one, planned family residential district, RP three, planned garden apartment residential district, CO, office building district CP two, planned general business district to A, agricultural district. Comments or questions? Gene, you want to call roll on this?
Councilmember Harrison?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilson?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
Councilmember Schut?
Yes.
Councilmember Winters?
Yes.
Mayor Morrow?
Yes.
Ordinance number two-four eighty-six passes. New business item number two. Consider a conditional use permit for oil wells on property located north of the intersection of One Hundred Sixty-seventh Street and Waverly Road. Brian?
Thank you, Mayor. At the April twenty-eighth meeting, the Planning Commission held a public hearing to consider a proposed conditional use permit. The applicant was the only party that spoke during the public hearing and the Planning Commission did vote six to one to forward the proposed amendment to the governing body with a recommendation for denial. At the May eighteenth, two thousand and five, city council meeting, the governing body and applicant came to a consensus to revise the proposal to limit the oil wells to the property currently zoned RP one and RP three. The applicant did provide the required revised site plan based on these discussions. The plan now shows fifty-five production wells, production and injection wells, along portion of property currently zoned residential. And so what you've got before you is the revised site plan. The property that would be zoned commercial is in the lower left-hand corner. It has no production or injection wells on it. The other ones are on the property that were zoned residential. If the governing body does wish to vary from the recommendation of the Planning Commission to deny the conditional use permit and the associated site plan, the following options are available. Again, the Planning Commission recommended denial. You can send it back to the Planning Commission for further consideration with specific direction as to what to consider. Or you can override the Planning Commission's recommendation by a two-thirds majority of the governing body. Suggested motion this evening, if the council wishes to approve the conditional use permit, the recommended motion would be to adopt an ordinance number.
Twenty-four eighty-seven.
Twenty-four eighty-seven. Approving the conditional use permit for oil wells on one hundred twenty-four point oh-nine-five acres located north and east of the intersection of One Hundred Sixty-seventh and Waverly Road with the following conditions. One, development shall be in accordance with the site plan and landscaping plan associated with CUP fifteen oh-one. The conditional use permit shall expire twenty years from the effective date. It was originally thirty and last meeting, the applicant reduced that to twenty. A gas and oil well permit shall be obtained for each well drilled from the city as outlined in chapter fifteen dash fifty-five of the Gardner Municipal Code. And all abandoned wells shall be plugged based on city and KCC standards.
Thank you, Brian. Public comments regarding new business item number two?
Adam Cox again, two eighty-five East Skylark Street. Regarding the conditional use permit for oil drilling, I was quite surprised that there was no discussion among the council of the points raised in the Planning Commission recommendation to deny. Virtually none of the issues raised in that recommendation were addressed by the council nor directly addressed by the attorney for the applicant. It's my understanding that the new modified proposal will remove several of the wells that were previously planned on the site maps and documentation that was publicly available. To vote on this tonight, therefore, to vote on a plan that's only been available for public review since it was posted late Thursday, May twenty-eighth, with the modified number of wells. This is another reason that this matter should be referred to the Planning Commission once the public has had time to review the modified site map and planning documents and a chance to comment on the proposal, especially with the commercial zoning on the same parcel. The council did not address the impact of this land use on the comprehensive plan. This area is identified for short-term growth and is on the edge of existing development. There are residential neighborhoods bordering the proposed site and numerous citizens whose property values, health, and welfare have the potential to be impacted by allowing this land use within city limits. A similar CUP was denied in August twenty-fourteen, you can reference CUP fourteen oh-one. New oil drilling within city limits is a different circumstance than historical or existing oil development. We should not look to the fact that there is already considerable oil development around and in Gardner as an argument why this proposal is a good idea. The comprehensive plan was developed with citizen input at considerable expense to provide an actionable plan to guide our fair city. If this plan will be disregarded every time someone asks, then what kind of stability will future developers be able to count on when planning to put in a new development? In addition to the impact on future growth and development caused by allowing this land use, there are numerous potential safety risks associated with oil drilling, storage, and transport. Injection wells have higher potential for hazards than ordinary wells and this proposal encompasses both well types. It would serve the public's interest to hear the governing body's rationale for overriding the various negatives outlined in the Planning Commission recommendation to deny this permit. If you choose to move forward, I'm interested in hearing on the public record what the reasons are to disregard the recommendation to deny. To summarize, zoning issue, I don't think was handled properly because it looks entirely different with the mixed use now. Discussion on the topic did not address or refute the potential safety impact and the variance from the comprehensive plan and how that benefits the community or what the potential benefit to the city of Gardner is by allowing this permit. Individual owners' property rights are not a sufficient reason to undertake a project that provides limited revenue to the city, increases the health and safety risk to the community, and devalues surrounding neighborhoods, blocks development of future residential and commercial space, and seems to, as a matter of common sense, be undesirable on its face, i.e. drilling for oil inside a city. It is my sincerest wish that this body will consider sending the zoning question in CUP fifteen one back to the Planning Commission. And should you proceed, I would urge you to deny this application. I have no desire to live in proximity to the hazards associated with oil drilling. And if this is the future of the city of Gardner, I and many other citizens will surely be considering this in our decisions regarding living in this community. It has long-reaching implications and I hope you will consider the entire community as well as the health and welfare of your citizens. I did speak to several council members and interact with them and I appreciate your time and discussion. That is very welcome and happy. Just as a reminder, looking here at the code eighteen one eighty-five fifty, criteria for considering applications, here are some of the factors that it was listed that it says the Planning Commission and the governing body may give consideration. The conformance of proposed use to the community development plan, the zonings and use of nearby properties and the extent to which the proposed use would be in harmony with such zoning and uses, the suitability of the property for the uses to which it has been restricted, the extent to which the approval would detrimentally affect nearby properties, the extent to which the proposed use would substantially harm the value of nearby properties, the extent to which the proposed use would create excessive air pollution, water pollution, noise pollution, or other environmental harm, the economic impact of the proposed use on the community, the gain, if any, to the public health, safety, and welfare due to denial of the application as compared to the hardship imposed on the landowner, if any, as a result of the denial of that application, and what did our professional staff recommend, which I assume the city still maintains the position they took in the beginning, which was to recommend denying this. With the growth by chance, you know, when you come in to put in a new plot of houses and all that, you build out a few, you're going to build out later when the economy picks up, the development right to the west of that. Now, all of a sudden, they're trying to put in big houses looking across at an oil well. Doesn't make any sense to me. Doesn't make any sense that that's the northern border of our city and where the growth can go and we're going to allow oil drilling on it. I just can't comprehend this in a city, you know? Perhaps it's my history, I grew up in Overland Park. Such a thing would not even be discussed. It's unthinkable to even do that. It doesn't even make sense. So, you know, I'm under no illusions as to this evening's events. But, you know, and now I see some of the drawbacks to sending you a letter in advance with my concerns. But you know what, fair enough. You know, I got a little bit of an answer as to where you were coming from about the zoning. But, you know, this is just, doesn't make any sense to me. And as baffling to me as to, you know, why I've been attacked so much for, you know, advocating a position about, you know, would rather not prefer this drilling to take place. So, hope you'll keep that in mind. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Adam.
Clint Barney, one through six, North Seer Street. I am not Sean Carlisle, but I am going to read something from Sean Carlisle. So I know I might look like him. I am not.
Thanks, Clint.
I didn't name any names. I wanted to speak on the facts based on my research. The KCC will be inspecting and regulating this regularly. They also require this surety bond to ensure the wells get plugged properly. In speaking with the KCC inspector, I've found that this company is in good standing with all issues, or with no issues, and they go above and beyond what's required. The wells can also be plugged and ready for development within a few weeks if the property is considered for purchase. The wells will not be visible from the road and their electric motors will not be heard unless you're within feet from the pump. The company uses water injection and has some innovative things they're doing with the pumping and recycling of water and prevention of erosion. Excuse me. Currently, Symphony Farms and Megan Valley are both across from the property, built overplugged oil wells and doesn't appear to have any issues. Lastly, it boils down to personal and property rights. This property owner isn't wanting to do anything unusual or illegal with his property. It will have no effect on any other citizens and will be regulated by the state and overseen by the EPA to ensure public safety. Thank you from Sean Carlisle and Clint Barney.
Thanks, Sean.
Thanks, Sean, Clint.
Keith Brock again, on behalf of the applicant. Business address, two sixteen South Hickory, Kansas. We can go over as much of the material again as you would like. When I came here on May the eighteenth, I met a council that had read our application in its entirety, had read the Planning Commission's recommendation in its entirety, had researched state requirements. They were prepared to hear our application. You all were informed, you understood the facts, you understood what we were asking. So because of that, I don't feel the need to replow that ground in terms of telling you something you've already heard from me or read in the materials that we submitted. But I'm more than happy to present any evidence or any answers to any questions to restate some of that if you think it would be helpful for the public generally. some of that if you think it would be helpful for the public generally. In terms of, just to restate a very small amount of it, I have some maps on here. Could you display them?
Well, she's getting that ready. Can I ask a question?
Yes.
I guess, I know spills are one of those big things everybody worries about. When was the last time there was a 100 gallon spill associated with this company?
To my knowledge, there's never been a 100 gallon spill.
About a 20 gallon spill.
We could ask the operations manager.
I already know probably the answer.
Maybe a more indirect answer to that question is, as part of the application, the applicant is promising to implement a spill prevention, control, and countermeasure program. That is a requirement by the EPA. The purpose of that program is to create an engineered drawing and also ensure that it's carried out on-site. The point being that the plan will affect the containment of the entire contents of the tank and related facilities. So, even if there were to be a spill, the berm and tank site required by the city, the spill prevention control plan, and the EPA would all ensure that that's contained at the tank. But historically, the answer to your question is it hasn't happened.
Thank you.
And for public record, this is not fracking, correct?
Now, fracking, in terms of what you're asking about, is fracking of horizontal wells, high pressure, high volume fracking. That's what you hear about in the media. These are very small vertical wells, referred to as stripper wells in eastern Kansas. These are exactly the same wells that are across the hedgerow to the north, exactly the same wells that are across Waverly Road to the east, north of Megan Valley. Nothing different in terms of the well construction, purpose, and procedures for these wells than the others.
Can you tell me if the, in the last meeting you told us that these wells would break even in terms of the cost and the return on the investment in three years? Does that include the cost of packing up the wells, plugging them, capping them, dismantling them, and returning the land to its natural?
I don't know if that number included recovering the plugging costs itself, but in terms of the entire project, the plugging costs are fairly minimal. Estimated plugging cost would be around $150,000. These wells are expected to come in at, before the commercial tracks were removed, roughly 100 barrels a day. So, I mean, 100 barrels a day at today's price, $60 a barrel, I mean, you wouldn't be talking about, you'd be talking about a very minimal length of time in addition to that, three years to recover. In addition to that, the price of oil today is a little bit higher than what it was when we had the three-year projection, so, you know, it very well could be shorter than that.
Can you explain the surety bonds and how those work?
The state of Kansas, through the Kansas Corporation Commission, requires surety bonds. They refer to it as financial assurance. The state legislature ordered the commission to require that in chapter 55, so the KCC, the Kansas Corporation Commission, has then gone ahead and set amounts that they believe are appropriate. Those amounts are determined by the number of wells and the depth of those wells, in essence to ensure that the cost of plugging can be recovered. The whole purpose of the financial surety is to make sure that the money is available to plug the wells. Since that fund has been enacted, there is a gross surplus of funds to plug those wells. The problem is, the financial assurance didn't occur until much later in time that the plugging, the well plugging became an issue. And so, the wells after that period, there's a huge surplus of funds, and in fact, the state legislature looks at robbing that fund almost every year. And so, continually, they take money from that fund to plug the wells drilled prior to that. You know, the point being that the money is collected, it does that their ST Petroleum, which is the operating company here, they have complied, they have no violations of KCC regulations, and are fully compliant with the financial assurance. In addition to that, the applicant, being Thomas Investments, is willing to guarantee as well that these wells will be plugged. This landowner is sitting on 195 acres worth of property right here. You know, rough value is probably more than $3 million. They're willing to guarantee that these wells are plugged. Plugging cost is roughly $150,000. So, you have an entity with more than $3 million worth of assets willing to stand behind the obligation to plug these wells.
And the last question I have is, these wells are going to be how, exactly how deep roughly, or exactly?
Roughly 800 feet.
800 feet.
Roughly.
So, where's the, and where's the water table in relation to that?
Right now.
How do you have, how do you do the water table?
The freshwater table?
Yes.
I know in the drilling, saltwater is 350 feet, so somewhere up above that, I mean, when we're looking.
So, we're talking well above the bottom of the well. Has there ever been any case of any breach of containment of the oil that's being brought up from 800 feet through the groundwater?
Not to my knowledge with currently, with the way that the wells are currently completed. I mean, unfortunately, the history didn't always require wells to be completed in the same manner that they do today. But the problems that people talk about with pollution, they're referring to wells drilled in the 60s when it was not standard to cement up the backside of the casing. They plugged these wells using hitch posts. At that time, that was the law, and no one knew any better, so to speak. Today, we know better than that. The wells are drilled, cements run up the entire backside of the casing, so you have the layer of steel pipe, layer of cement surrounding that, then the perforating guns lower to the desired formation. Holes are blown into the bottom of the formation so that that's the only area of contact is with that formation. The rest of it, you have a layer of steel pipe and a layer of cement all the way to the top. At the top of it, you have a second layer of pipe and a second layer of cement. That's known as surface casing. In addition, all of the injection wells, which were a topic of safety, the Kansas Corporation Commission requires that they be, that MIT tests, mechanical integrity tests, be performed every five years. They pressure the well up, make sure that it holds pressure, there are no leaks. That process has to be done before they can be initially put online, then it's a five-year period after that. So, there are, in terms of well construction, there are a lot of safeguards in place to make sure. With the cement at the backside, the engineers at the KCC look at the amount of cement used, they make the calculation of the pipe diameter and also the bore hole to ensure that there are no, you know, voids or air pockets in between, and that that's a solid column of cement. And that all, again, is done before any operation on them at all is allowed.
Question about the sidelines and the view of the wells from the, from the, the adjoining property.
Yeah.
The, the understanding that I have is that Hedges Landscaping firms would be placed in, that would obscure the view of those, of those wells from 106th and 7th Street as well as Waverly Road. Am I correct in that?
Correct. The site plan contains also a landscaping plan that contains landscaping proposals. The applicant's response when we approached staff about the landscaping was, in essence, if you tell us what we want, we want to, we want to do what's best for the city in that regard. You know, they, so we're willing to work with the city in terms of landscaping and all that's required. We put out the proposal in order to try to, to make an attempt to guess what it was that the city would like. I think staff has agreed that we've done that. In addition to the landscaping, if you look at this slide here, all of the property outlined in red is owned by the applicant. The property that's going to be affected by this is the northern portion and then the western portion of the large red square. In total, there are 195 acres approximately. This CUP will affect only 95 of those. So, to the south, it's bordered by, you know, in part, property owned by the applicant. To the east is property owned by the applicant. North of the property owned by the applicant to the east is a use for agricultural purposes and also has plugged wells. To the north, there's a hedgerow that separates those properties, which will screen the property from that, but there are active oil wells on that property. To the west, there is Megan Valley and also the city's electrical substation that border this, and to the north of Megan Valley are active oil wells and active tank site. You know, in terms of safety, I think it's important to note that the oil operations manager for ST Petroleum, his son and five grandchildren live directly across the street from these wells. He's not going to do something that's going to pollute the air, pollute the water when his grandchildren live right there. In addition, this is the applicant's home. He lives in the Garden Edgerton area. He has his entire life. He has invested heavily in the city, as you can see by this development. No one has more at stake here than him, and he's willing to put that all out there and say, I'll ensure that it's done, it's done right, and I'll take care of it when it's finished.
Now, let me, let me, let me follow up because it's very important. The applicant is the owner. The owner is the applicant. They have more vested interest in this property and the integrity of this property with regard to environmental issues than anybody else because this is, you know, they own this, and they are, they are putting themselves, they're ultimately responsible for anything that happens, and it would diminish the value of their parcel if something were to happen.
That's absolutely correct. This is not a lease situation. This is not someone going out and getting investors. The applicant is the property owner. They are the proposed operator. They have a proven track record. They have other properties that's developed. You've heard me reference ST Petroleum and Thomas Investments. Thomas Investments is the property owner. ST Petroleum is owned by Joel Thomas, who is the owner of Thomas Enterprises, or Thomas Investments, I'm sorry. The reason for the two entities is that in the state of Kansas, you're required to have an operator's license with the KCC and post that financial assurance bond. ST Petroleum has that operator's license and has posted that bond, but in terms of the individuals behind that, they're the same. And to give the city comfort that the applicant's not trying to, in essence, hide from the liability by having two entities, they're willing to pledge on behalf of the owner that this will be plugged at the end of the 20 years. You know, this applicant, or this application has generated a lot of comments, but this isn't the first time in the City of Gardner that a governing body has been asked to approve oil and gas operations. In the public comments section, you heard about a CUP that was denied, but back in 2008, the high school purchased approximately 80 acres of property and hadn't intended to build the new high school on it yet, and they leased that property for a fixed-term lease to an oil and gas operator to operate until it was ready to be developed. The board approved that lease, the patrons of that district approved that lease. So, this isn't the first time that this has been asked. It has been asked, and it's been adopted in the past. In terms of sightlines, I put up here an aerial, if you can see the, at the southern edge of the property, on the west side of Waverly Road is Megan Valley. The majority of the property that borders those residential developments is the property that's been removed from this CUP request that is owned commercial. So, there will be, maybe the northernmost lot will be a well across from that, but nothing else. The rest of the property will be across the road from the city's power substation, so there will be no one who's going to look out into the wells. Instead, they first have to look across your, your electric substation. And then to the north of Megan Valley, if you count them out there, they are, they're active wells. If you drive up, turn around on that cul-de-sac, you'll see pumping wells right at the end of it. The cul-de-sac, up off of Megan, the north end of Megan Valley. In addition, if you look in the top left-hand corner of this screen, those black dots, that's an existing tank site on the neighboring property. The applicant's proposed tank site will be right across Waverly Road at the same location.
I wanted to just comment, there is some financial benefit to the city as well. It's my understanding it's taxed at a rate of 30%. Is that discussed?
Here's the tax example. You're correct, there will be tax benefits. You know, this is one of those meetings that I'm happy to come before you. I sat there and I listened to all the financial stuff, and I'm the only one that gets to come before you tonight and not ask for money. Our application comes and offers tax revenue without any, without the request for money, so that, in essence, makes it a little easier for us. The best that we can estimate the property tax revenue is by using the Thomas A. as an example. This is another lease that's owned by the applicant. It's outside the City of Gardner by approximately a mile. In 2011, before the development occurred on that property, the property tax was $1,200, as you can see. After the property was developed for oil and gas, the property tax in 2014 was over $41,000. If that property were developed exactly the same and were sitting on the subject tract, that would be even more of a property tax benefit to the city because your mill levy's a little higher than what it is in the rural Johnson County. The Thomas A. is subject to a 119.869 mill levy, whereas this property is 133.376. Of those taxes, 22% go directly to the City of Gardner, another 53% directly to the school district. You know, you guys talked for a long time about police SUVs. A third of the cost of a police SUV is one year's property tax with this. And again, we're not asking for any monetary contributions from the city whatsoever. This is a short-term, temporary use to realize the value of the oil until it can be developed for residential and commercial purposes, which is what everyone wants. The properties remain vacant for 10 years. The applicant currently farms it, and they're just asking to realize the value of the oil while they continue to wait for market conditions to facilitate residential and commercial development. Any other questions?
Questions or comments? Any questions? Any other comments either? You know, I, I, like Adam, don't have any, I'm not laboring under any assurances that any of this, I mean, what I'm about to say is going to matter. I agree with Christina in talking with city staff that what we did as far as the rezoning was proper. And Adam spoke for a nice long while, and he mentioned an awful lot of things, but the one thing that struck with me was, you know, another opportunity for this to go before a, a planning commission, which we spent a lot of time this evening talking about how we were going to appoint people to things like the planning commission or other boards or commissions. And, you know, there's, there's public hearing processes, and this is, this is a substantial change from what went before the planning commission the last time. And I'm not even saying that I'm against you all getting your conditional use permit, but procedurally, I would prefer this to go back to the planning commission to go through again, but that is just me.
To me, the planning commission is just going to make a recommendation anyway, whether we see fit to follow it or not. I mean, they don't have any authority over us. They're just going to talk about the same thing we just heard and make their recommendation. Whether we follow that or not is up to us.
Well, I understand.
It seems to me that's a waste of time.
We spent a lot of time talking about civic engagement and citizen input, and I thought Adam made a very compelling case for why it should go back to the planning commission.
Yeah, I don't, I don't wholly disagree with that notion. The difficulty I have with it, I guess, is the fact that what we're talking about is a reduction in the number of wells. We've heard the planning commission's reasoning for, for denial, and their basis for denial has not, has not changed by reducing the number of wells. So, what I would, what I would expect them to do is deny it again because the reasoning is the same. So, it would be just an exercise. So it would be just an exercise. And if we all are in agreement, we all know that that's the, that's what, that's the eventuality. And what would be the purpose?
Yeah, I, I agree with that. It is, it's a reduction. We're not adding anything and, and when you look through the planning commission's reasons for denial, the number of wells is not, wasn't a driver for any of that.
I would agree.
So.
I know. Like I said, I'm not even saying that I'm against.
No.
Approval for, for the conditional use permit. But in this particular instance, because I believe as strongly as I do in, in letting citizens' voices be heard and having citizens engage with, and leaning on the expertise that we're trying to develop in our, our boards and commissions, you know, we'll probably get along.
Well, here's the, here's the, here's the, and I'm not going to belabor this point, but when we're talking about citizen engagement, citizen involvement in the process, individuals that were within 1,000 feet of this parcel were sent individual letters. They were individually notified of this, okay? Property owners on, on all sides were also given individual letters. No individuals came to the planning commission.
Steve, everybody knows this.
Yes, I know that.
Steve, everybody knows.
I know that. I'm just, I'm just reiterating.
Yeah.
Okay? There has been plenty of opportunities for citizen involvement and engagement in this process already. And so, you know, to take us back to the planning commission, to me, doesn't serve any useful purpose.
You know, I already had said that I figured I was the only, I was standing alone here. I just didn't want to belabor the point any longer.
I know. I just don't feel like, I don't feel like we, we want to give the impression that we're not interested in citizen input because we are very interested in citizen input, but.
And I didn't say that anybody wasn't interested in citizen input. I said that Adam made a compelling case for why this should go back to the planning commission. Anyway, I would entertain a motion on ordinance number 2487.
So moved.
Second.
Motion to Harrison, second, Melton, that we adopt ordinance number 2487 approving a conditional use permit for oil wells on 124.095 acres, located north and east of the intersection of 167th Street and Waverly Road, with conditions, stipulations, one through four noted below. City clerk.
Councilmember Harrison?
Yes.
Councilmember Melton?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
Councilmember Schu?
Yes.
Councilmember Winters?
Yes.
Mayor Morrow?
No.
Okay. Ordinance number 2487 passes. That is the end of new business items. We're going to move on to, since we're going to adjourn into executive session shortly, we'll, we'll go to council updates first. Before we go into executive session, we realize that not everybody always wants to hang around for, after executive session. So, does staff have anything for city council? Gonzalo, do you have anything? Thoughts on your first week in town?
Actually, this is my second week. And I'm very, it's a real, a, a honor to be here, being part of the team. I need to still learn a lot about the city. But with my experience, I think I'll be willing to contribute a lot to the city and meet the needs of the residents in the community.
Welcome aboard, Gonzalo.
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you.
Jeff?
Oh, just 15 seconds real quick. Hopefully, the weather will start cooperating with some of our outdoor events. It's been a real challenge for us thus far. Big weekend this weekend. We've got a major tournament here in town, West Side Park and Celebration Park. So we're hoping to, hoping to be able to get that in. Also have movies in the park, free movie for the public at Cornerstone Park this weekend. Big Hero Six will be playing at 8:30. Have our bike rodeo as well. Hopefully, Chief and I can race on our new police bicycles through the obstacle course. That's a challenge, a public challenge there, Chief. So a lot of activities planned. Hopefully, the swimming pool will be open a little bit more than, than not this week, so.
What's the average water temperature right now at the pool, just like you're asking?
The average?
Yeah. Do you keep track of that, just?
Yes, we do track that.
And what, what is that?
It's in the 60s.
A little chilly. I'm too old for that. So I'd check with you and confirm my suspicion.
Brian, do you have anything?
I have no mayor.
But Chief?
Just a quick correction. Somebody asked about the road police cars we have. We have 15 up there.
And how many bicycles?
We have four. And they're all four of them. We're fast, we're in the police car.
Janie, you have anything, Laura? Any legal advice, Ryan?
Nothing comes to mind.
Nothing right now, anyway. Very good. That's nice to know. Cheryl?
No, thank you.
Does council have anything for staff?
No.
Just a real quick reminder, Festival on the Trails.
Yes.
June 12th through 15th. So Mark Chestnut, Atlanta Rhythm Section, our very own Brandon Miller Band will be there Saturday night. So please come on out. Should be a great time.
Anyone else?
Actually have a few things. I noticed on the billing, I asked questions about some expenditures. You guys probably saw today, there were some lunches and stuff. I would challenge council and mayor to not have the city pay for lunches. I think that in the economic situation that we're in, I think we can buy our own lunches if we're going to go have talks. I didn't take this job to get free lunch. I don't think the citizens need to pay for our lunches. We all are professionals. I also would like to bring this to the rest of the council's attention, since I really can't talk to you back and forth. Some of you probably aren't aware that there was an economic development meeting here at city hall. I was invited by USD 231, not by the mayor and sheriff. And I think that those kind of meetings, council needs to be told about. If economic development meetings are happening, I think we need to be involved, at least know that there's something going on. Do you, do you have any thoughts on that, Mayor?
Well, actually, we were asked by someone to ask a question to the, the school district, somebody whose property was taken from them during an exercise of eminent domain.
I understand. And it appeared to me that you were almost an agent for that person who's not a citizen of Gardner.
I, I, see, you and I were sitting in the same meeting, but we're obviously seeing things in different, different ways. He asked if I could forward a message along to the school district. That's what I did. I'll, the other thing that I did while we discussed it was talk to them about what are their plans for that property? If they, if they got them, because we need to be able to start planning for development in that direction, especially since we have Adam Boyston coming to council meetings every single council meeting, making a very compelling case as to why we need sidewalks heading up 175th Street and on Waverly Road. This wasn't meant to be an economic development meeting. It was, it was extending a question for a property owner and, and conferring with our closest intergovernmental partner to, to talk about what we're going to be doing in the future. At the flooded sometimes, no sidewalk all the time, 175th Street and Waverly.
I understand. The, the email invite date that I got said economic development meeting. So I mean, that's what I'm saying. If, if there's a meeting, I think council should know about it.
Yeah, that's, that's, I, you know, the invites that, that I got, the way it appeared on my calendar, didn't say anything about economic development.
I, I think, I think though that, that Rich does make a point. And that is somewhere, I know that there's some discussions that obviously are protected by confidentiality. I get that. But if there is, if there's discussions between intergovernmental entities, whether it's with the city of Olathe or the city of Edgerton.